Thanks for the invitation. This has been a great session so far, so I hope I can live up to the high standard set. I will actually go a little bit into IDB. But yeah, it's going to be a mixture of work we've done in terms of more systems vaccineology and also some more for us traditional epitope prediction things, and that's going to be very short. So starting in general, what is the team? Yeah, that's I put it up first so that I don't run out of time. Lots of the work I'm presenting today has been done by Ricardo and Tunes, who's actually primarily in Alessandro Sattis' lab, who's also been a driver of many of the work I've been showing. Shane Crotty also at the institute has done a lot of the work here, and Mikhail Komaznov, who's now back in Russia, has done much of the bioinformatics analysis, and Ferran Soldevila has more recently contributed to more assays we've been running. So what is portocellulopertussis? So more commonly, you would know pertussis as the causative agent of whooping cough. It's a bacteria that can specifically in infants cause deadly disease. It's been currently prevented by using a vaccine called T-dab or D-tap. Actually, D-tap is what you get as an infant, and T-dab is what you get as an adult. And this is essentially tetanus, diphtheria, and pertussis. Whenever you have like a rusty nail and go to the hospital, you get a T-dab booster. So actually, people are not just immunized once, but very frequently immunized over and over. And when this vaccine was introduced back in the 50s, it was a massive success in terms of that the reported cases have been going down, 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 and down. And the vaccine that was used wasn't inactivated whole bacterial vaccine. So the issue was, though, that essentially it caused like quite massive irritation, fever, et cetera, in infants that were immunized with it. And so there was the goal to develop a new vaccine that has less of these kinds of side effects. And this led to the induction, production of the AP vaccine, which is the salillaparatus, meaning it's not just like bacteria killed, ground up, and injected, but the specific antigens. There's actually many different versions of AP, but there's three to five proteins that have been previously shown to be the dominant antibody targets that you recognize after you get the WP vaccine. And so the initial clinical trial showed that using this AP vaccine was just as protective and just as effective in inducing antibodies as the W vaccine was. And the advantage was that you had much fewer side effects, so it was a no-brainer to switch it out. Now, the issue was, the switch was in 1995, and a while later, about 10 years later, cases started to go up again of reported whooping cough. And they have been increasing a bit, a lot, actually, and kind of in waves. And most importantly, the vaccine is most deadly in infants, but the people that were getting sick were 10-year-olds. So what was the cause of that? The initial immediate hypothesis is, okay, the vaccine is no longer efficacious because your bacteria has mutated, and you can no longer have protective immunity from the original vaccine to the old bacterial strain. Another option was that the vaccination rates have gone down because people are no longer wanting to get vaccinated, so you have a drop of herd immunity and you have a flare. Or alternatively, that the switch to the AP vaccine itself actually reduced the longevity of the response that is induced by it, and therefore has reduced protective immunity. I'm not going to go into too much details, but mutations, you should be able to track down and then identify how there's new virulent strains that has certain mutations, and at present, there isn't that great evidence for that. Vaccination rates, then you should really see a strong correlation of more or less vaccination rates in certain counties, areas of the country that lead to this drop, and that just isn't found. So we've been focusing on this third area, the idea that the AP vaccine has some reduction of immunity also, because again, it was shown to be just as infectious in infants, but seems the drop seems to be, the increase in cases seems to be in teenagers. So focusing on that, what could this AP vaccine do differently? So there's two options here, that by switching the ingredients of the vaccine and what you trigger the immune response against, you'll now have the specificity that is different from before, a much narrower specificity, and that might reduce the ability of having long-term protection, or alternatively, that the phenotype of the induced immune response is different and is left, less efficacious. So when we discuss these kinds of things, I thought, I mean, I come back from a physics background, so I always like to have some more basic immunology's background slides here. When you immunize someone, what do we know what happens in terms of the antigen-specific induced adaptive immunity? So supposedly, the vaccine you're giving is going to be taken at by antigen-presenting cells, dendritic cells, we heard a lot about, also macrophages, monocytes, et cetera. In the cell itself, it's going to be ground down to individual peptide pieces that can be presented by MHC molecules on the surface, and when they find a T-cell that has an appropriate T-cell receptor, it can recognize these peptide epitopes, so fragments of what you had in your vaccine. And if that happens, then this T-cell is going to develop into a memory helper cell, or TH here in short. And these TH cells do a bunch of things, including helping B-cells that produce antibodies. So if a B-cell takes up this antigen through its B-cell receptor, meaning it has on the surface essentially an antibody that it could secrete that binds to the vaccine antigen, it does the same thing like another antigen-presenting cell, grinds it up, gets peptide pieces, presents them to the T-cell, and this helper cell will then tell it, this is something that is dangerous, and you should be starting making your antibodies. That then leads to isotype class switching of the B-cell, and the B-cell starts making these antibodies that are secreted, and then these antibodies contribute to the immune response that is, that can be in the current development of a disease, or in the case of vaccination, you want essentially these B-cells to be able to rapidly expand and make a lot of these antibodies upon re-encounter of the antigen where essentially the same thing happens again. So in this memory immune response that you're trying to induce with antibodies, sorry, with the vaccination, you will have, again, your T-helper cells, that when they get more of the same, see more of the same peptide, they'll then produce cytokines. And what specific cytokines those are is going to depend on the essentially T-helper subset of these cells. They also, you have antibodies directly neutralizing the vaccine antigen, which now would be potentially in the context of a larger virus, say, or bacteria in the case of pertussis. And you also have innate cells that have actually on their surface bound antibodies that allow them to take them up and then make their own cytokine response, and that could be also mast cells, say, or again, like dendritic cells, macrophages, et cetera. So this is essentially the memory immune response you're trying to induce, that when you have your vaccine antigen coming back in, that it gets killed by antibodies, that it triggers an effective cytokine production response. But what I mainly want to get back to you, drive home here, is that the development of T-cell and B-cell responses and the antigen specificity is interlinked. So typically, when you hear about vaccine development, much of what you heard earlier today was focusing on how effective is the induction of antibody responses. T-cell responses are another angle here, and there, you can't, essentially, you're going to get effective T-cell, B-cell responses if you have an effective helper response for it. Everything here is a lot more complicated than I'm drawing it, but I thought this is the primary points to take home. The other thing is that for all of these, you have different subsets. So there's the different T-helper subsets that make different cytokines when they get stimulated, that stimulate T, B cells in a different way, that lead to different isotype class switching. And then you have things like, so for example, an allergic response typically means you have antibodies that are IgE versus what you typically want with an vaccine-induced immune response is IgG. So you have these different flavors, if you want, of T-cell and B-cell responses, and there are linkages between them, and they're quite complicated and also not completely understood. So now, how can we study waning immunity in humans? You have a switch from the W-P vaccine to the AP vaccine, and we see that there's, after a long time, we see a change in efficacy and an increase in caseloads. So you can say, okay, obviously, specifically as a bioinformatician, you just take some infants, immunize some with WP, the other ones with AP, then you wait 10 years and see who gets sick. That's not going to happen for a number of reasons. The first one, you are not actually allowed to give anyone WP vaccine in the US anymore. Only AP vaccine is allowed. The second, it would be an extremely impractical study, where you'd have to wait like decades before you would have any meaningful results, if at all. So rather, the approach that actually has been developed by Alex was, okay, we're going to just take people that were born before 1995, in which case they would have gotten the WP vaccine. And we've gotten people who were born after 1996, in which case they've gotten the AP vaccine. And then we're saying, okay, right now, these people are going to get boosted. There's a regular boosting schedule, every five years you're supposed to get it, and you're going to take blood before and after and use the vaccine, just like Bali said earlier, essentially as a probe to test how is the immune system reacting to re-exposure to the vaccine, which is a proxy for how it should react when it actually sees the bacteria. So we've been collecting these samples, and the first study that came out of this was published in 2018, and Ricardo's the first author, and Alex again was leading this, that was looking specifically at AP and WP primed in infancy, and then pre and post-boost, how does the delivery of the T-dab booster vaccine change the immune response? And so the first thing that you're seeing is that when you measure IgG, which is the typical correlate of protection used for pertussis immunity, you're asking how much antibody IgG do you induce? You see, first of all, that there are good levels before the boost already, and then these levels go up as you increase, sorry, after the boost. So now, if you compare people who have been in infancy given the AP vaccine versus the WP vaccine, there's actually not much of a difference. You would expect here that the, if the AP vaccines really are worse protected, then you would expect lower titres in the AP vaccine, but you just don't see that. And when you look at the boost in terms of total immunoglobulin levels over four, up to four months post-vaccination, these look pretty identical for AP and WP. If you look at this in a different way, for plasma blast day seven, they also look very comparable between the two. So in contrast, if you look at the T-cell responses, so you take T-cells from these individuals, you stimulate them with the AP antigen post-boost, and you're asking, how does this, what kind of response do I get? So in terms of interferon gamma, you see on, at the median response level, you have somewhat less interferon gamma in AP versus WP individuals. In contrast, you have more IL-4 production, which is going with TH2 responses in AP individuals, and you have less IL-17 responses in AP individuals. So overall, you have a really distinct immune response profile in the people who have been primed with AP versus WP in infancy, and that's actually quite amazing. When you think about it, that this is now 18 or 20 years later, these people have gotten four or five booster shots, all of will have been the AP booster shot. And still, there is a difference in how this is maintained between AP and WP individuals. In addition to this, when we look at the magnitude of the response in AP and WP individuals, we see that the AP individuals do not show a very significant level of boosting when comparing the pre and post- booster vaccine response versus the WP vaccine primed individuals show a very clear increase in the immune response after the boost. And that is again maintained up to four months post-the booster vaccine, and these are just different ways of looking at it. But also importantly, one of the limitations obviously of this whole design is that we are stuck with people of different ages. So this is actually, this is from the 2018 paper, this has gotten better now, where we've gotten younger people, I'm sorry, older people who've gotten the AP vaccine, and we can do more comparisons. But here, very clearly, there is no trend that essentially there's a constant increase, say, in the full change with age, if anything, it's the opposite. And we already see a drastic difference here at the ages where the ranges are most closely So what maintains this difference? As I said, like you have people that 18 years past their vaccination as infants are showing a different type of T-cell response. So this is where we then started, inspired by studies from Bali or John and others, to use essentially this kind of systems immunology approach and ask for, when we look at the T-cell response, we're typically looking at 14 days or so post-boost, what happens early on, what happens immediately once the booster shot is given? And so we recruited 60 individuals here, about half with AP and half with WP, and performed a number of assays RNA-seq site of antigen-specific serology, plasma proteomics using OLink, very similar to what you've seen in other talks earlier today. And then we collected samples prior to the boost on day 1, 3, 7, and 14. So the first thing we did, and I think this is maybe the main message that I have in my whole talk, one of the real complicating issues here is when you're doing systems immunology, that you easily have, easily 10,000, often 100,000 or so variables that you're looking at. If you're going to do some kind of targeted looking for what are the differences between my two groups, and you have 18 individuals in each, you're going to run into problems, as in you'll always find something, and it doesn't at all have to be biologically meaningful. So we always wanted to dimensionality reduction, and the very first thing is essentially for the transcriptomics data, where this is particularly problematic, is to cluster them based on genes that are falling together in terms of that, between different samples, they show the same pattern of going up and down together. And there's standard methods for this, to use WG-CNA like most people, and then identified essentially 39 different gene clusters. Now, each of these lines here is one gene cluster, and we grouped them furthermore, saying that, okay, there might be different clusters here, but when we look at the kinetics now, and ask, are they perturbed between any two time points in the time course that we have, which ones fall together? We call that our cluster groups 1 through 5, which, of genes that are falling into one cluster, and then I group together by showing the same kind of kinetic. So when we do that, one of the things that becomes immediately apparent when we compare to our site of data that gives us gene frequencies, is that many of the gene clusters that we have are explained directly based on changes in the composition of the cells between different samples. So in some cases, such as B-cells, you see here up top, you have the site of data, there's a frequency of T-cells over time, you have the median here in the solid line, in the bold line, doesn't really change at all over the post-vaccination, specifically been looking at the antiseptive individuals. But when you look at the correlation with this gene expression cluster, this is a cluster 24, you have a very, very nice correlation. So, and as part of this cluster, you have CD19, which is the hallmark gene of B-cells. So essentially, many of the variations you'll see when you do these kinds of analyses across individuals are properties of the individuals themselves, and these are completely not perturbed by the vaccination. So arguably, these are unlikely to be having a causative role here, or at least their expression level doesn't seem to be impacted by, based on the booster vaccination, but still, you'll have massive differences in these when analyzed at a given time point between different groups, just because some people have more and some people have less B-cells. Same is for NK cells. And then we also see a number of gene models that correlate perfectly with things like in monocyte influx at day one, which is very well-known. Here you see the classical monocytes that include CD14, or the broader monocyte cluster population overall, which includes TLR4. So those are the kinds of things we're expecting to see, similarly, we're expecting to see from many, many other studies, that there should be a peak in antibody secreting cells on day seven, and we see that again. So essentially, we have these different measures that are confirming the validity of overall observations, and we can explain several of the variations that we have in, specifically in terms of gene expression, based on cell type composition. Looking at the serology data next, so we tested the reactivity for a number of the vaccine antigens that are present in the pertussis vaccine. We took them over time and for different immunoglobulin isotypes, subtypes, so IgG1, 2, 3, 4, and IgE. We also have RNA-seq data and can quantify the magnitude of the expression of these things just based on expression of the constant chain in these immunoglobulin genes. And when we look at that data, we see very consistently, also when comparing it to the, sorry, comparing to the frequency of antibody secreting cells that we get from site of, that there's essentially a rapid increase and maximum at day seven of the level of gene expression of immunoglobulin genes and of antibody secreting cells, and then they drop versus, when you look at the serology tie there, it goes up and stays up, because antibodies are long-lived and can live for months easily in serum. So again, this gives us confidence that overall, when we look at these vaccine responses, and I have to emphasize that so far, we've grouped all AP and W pre-primed individuals together, we see like a very consistent picture of what we're expecting post-vaccination. So now, our goal here was to ask, what's different between AP and WP primed individuals? So again, they have been primed with a different vaccine in infancy, and now they're getting boosted, what is different between them? And when we looked at all of these gene modules that we had, after doing quite stringent statistical correction for significance, we found only two clusters that showed a difference on day seven, and this last cluster 31, cluster 38, and you see in both cases, AP shows a higher level of expression than WP. Now, when we looked at what are the specific genes that are responsible in the DEC analysis for this different, you have here in red the AP, in blue the WPs, and you see that there's a subset here of the AP individuals that are driving this. So it's not like that there's like a universal difference in AP versus WP, instead, what we find is like a subset of the AP donors that is driving a difference than we're observing. And now, the hallmark genes of these clusters, kind of the center genes of each of the clusters, are ICM1 and NFkapabIA, which is actually, I always confuse it with NFkapab, this is the NFkapab inhibitor alpha. Okay, so you see here that these differences are not limited to day seven, but they already pre-exist very much definitely for NFkapabIA, and actually, they're most pronounced on day three. So looking then specifically at these genes and following them to the time points, we find that on day three, there's actually more, or getting rid of the clusters, specifically looking at the genes that are differentially expressed, we find again ICM1 and NFkapabIA, but also a number of cytokines, including CCL3, for which we had other data available based on concentration in plasma, where we could then see that both our expression data based on RNA-seq and our concentration levels based on plasma indicate that there's clearly an increased level of production in AP. And looking at this again, we see that there's a subset of individuals that are driving this difference. So going further with that antibody data that we have, we can look for specifically IgE antibodies, and IgE is again like associated with allergic immune responses, it's not normally what you want as in the result of vaccination, and there were three individuals that showed IgE responses post-boost to multiple pertussis antigen in the vaccine. And importantly, these are not just in general allergic people, so we also have the diphtheria antigens in there, and there, for example, is other individuals that are making, showing IgE responses. So we do see three, and all three of them actually are within that subset of individuals I pointed out earlier, making a lot of CCL3 on day three, and making a lot of NFkapabIA on day seven. So this suggests that these, what we would consider as outliers here in terms of making IgE response by the antibodies, also seem to be outliers in terms of having a heavily high level of CCL3 production on day three. Moreover, I started off saying that there was no difference in IgG production in total in our AP versus WP donors. Now, actually, for this study, and that was the past study 2018, in this study, we had the IgG subtypes resolved, and IgG4, which is actually quite different in that it's, it doesn't have the same activating capacity that IgG1 has to a number of these other innate responses. Essentially, the antibody has the specificity end, and has as the other side kind of a signaling end, and so it's lacking much of the capacity for the signaling domain. You see, there is actually a quite substantial difference in the level of IgG4 production for FHA, which is one of the vaccine antigens here, it's most pronounced, and that level of difference is kind of maintained. You're seeing a boosting of the IgG4 responses in, from day zero to day 14, but the difference in terms of WP having a lower degree of IgG4 response is actually maintained. Now, interestingly, if you think about it, if you have a long-term pre-existing difference of IgG4 that is already there prior to vaccination, it is tempting to think that these antibodies will be there, will be binding to the vaccine antigens, and then will trigger a different immune response than in the case of WP. So we looked for, is there a transcriptional signature downstream from this initial antigen from the day zero that is then triggered? And we do see actually this cluster 21 here, that shows a good correlation with the level of IgG4 prior to vaccination, and this is the one cluster, should have put it here, that has a very different kinetic from all the others with a constant increase and includes genes like CXCL5 and the number of integrants that are quite, quite interesting to look at. So what have we learned from this so far? So broadly speaking, the immune response, I mean, look overall, is actually quite similar. These things like monocyte influx at day one, peak of antigen production on day seven, et cetera, happens in both AP and WP primed individuals. When we look at the differences between AP and WP prime, what we see primarily is a difference in quality rather than magnitude. So specifically, we saw differences in the T-memory cell response polarization, so an increase in gamma and IL-17 in the WP prime versus an increase in IL-4 in the AP primed individuals. Similarly, there's a difference in IgG polarization, so that IgG4 is much increased in the AP individuals. So the other thing we have to point out here is that we did not observe really any kind of very consistent difference that is shared by all individuals that are AP versus WP vaccinated, but rather, we see a subset of individuals, and that obviously means there might be cofactors here. There might be environmental exposures, genetic factors, anything like that, that would be increasing this difference here in the subset of our AP vaccines, which is specifically an issue because of numbers. We already have to be very careful, and this is the reason why we did this, we were very careful of not doing underpowered analysis here by trying as much as possible to do dimensionality reduction upfront. If we don't, we're going to easily find all kinds of things that might subset our AP from WP individuals that have little or nothing to do, whatever, worst case, something like that, that some people give blood in the morning or in the evening or anything like that, so we're going to have to be really careful for this. And that is something, I think, in general, in systems immunology needs to be very careful, we need to be very careful about our, the danger of falling into, with relatively slow, low numbers, which is a consequence of these sometimes being quite expensive experiments, it is important that we are thorough in determining how we evaluate what is actually a valid finding and what is not. And now, what is the way to do that? There, we have a new project that I am very hopeful for and that I was excited to present here, even though we're not ready yet. There's, I mean, not ready, as in we're just getting started. We got a computational modeling of immunity center grant awarded, that is specifically going to look at these pertussis boost responses, and our goal is here to essentially have a community-driven approach to predictive modeling that'll then allow us to convince each other. that'll then allow us to convince each other and hopefully also immunologists, many of which are quite skeptical of any kind of predictive quantitative approaches, that what we're doing is actually has a meaningful predictive value. And so what the goal here would be to build on experiences of CASP and similar efforts in structure prediction, there was similar skepticism in the past, and now everybody's doing it. The idea is that we would publish baseline experimental data of a pre-boost state of cohort of forty or so individuals, and then ask the community predict, could you rank these? Which one of them is going to have the highest I G G titres on day fourteen or the highest monoflux influx on day one or makes the most C C L three on day three? And then the idea is, if you do this routinely and go through stage of here, everybody can submit their predictions, we see what works. And over time, then convince ourselves what approaches are useful, what biological hypotheses hold up, and what modeling approaches are superior to others. So, and this is coming in twenty twenty one, unless we continue with this pandemic thing that has been a bit of a hurdle here. How am I doing on time? Not good.
Yeah, not very good.
So I should stop right now. I have a whole second part on the I D B, and that's great.
That is to be another day, I think. Thanks a lot. Thank you very much. So this, hopefully, this challenge, when it comes, my lab will be participating as well as several other labs tomorrow. So it's going to be, hopefully, it's going to be a useful challenge for computational biologists to put their skills into, you know, something that's helpful in vaccine response prediction. So Bjorn, there are a few questions I'll ask. One is very quick. I think Emily Tha is asking about the H L A types between A P and W P. Are they comparable for the donors?
So they are totally not comparable. And that's one of the many very important things that where you simply cannot enroll comparable MHC alleles. As in, I mean, that's the reason why it's used to track differences in individuals. So we are using as much as possible general promiscuous peptide pools that should be working in pretty much all individuals, but yes, this is going to be an impact.
Okay, there's one more question, Bjorn. It's a little bit on the longer side. I'll let you answer that, and we will move on to the good. Thanks a lot. Thanks for the